A potential fishing and or kayak launch. So we had some initial conversations as if it's possible, if it's feasible and you know what needs to go into it. Then of course, some potential funding opportunities that might be coming up. So I mean essentially it's it's a small property. It's got direct lakefront. We still have some county highway things to to figure out, but I think they would potentially be on board. But yeah, I mean, the site would be a potential small, you know, handcrafted kayak canoe launch. Potentially some signage, small parking area and a essentially a little bit of a ramp to allow access to the to the creek.
Yeah, Mark, what's what's the benefit to the county for doing this?
The county?
But you're on your your perspective.
Well, let me just be great. So Erie County is I work. Mark Aston, the district field manager for the Erie County Soil and Water Conservation District. So everyone always thinks we're a county department. We're actually a political subdivision of state government. So similar to a fire district or a school district, Erie County is our boundary. Every county has one. Our charge is generally water quality. We do a lot of agricultural best management practices. We've been called on in Erie County due to a lot of street mix stabilization. We provide technical guidance to private landowners on recreational uses of properties, what you can do, wetlands, stream disturbances, all that kind of good stuff. So we were out and about quite a bit. We do a lot of watershed management planning with a lot of other agencies as well. So yes, so essentially water access is always a concern. And improving water access is always a legitimate recreational benefit in our neck of the woods, whether that be waterfront and or streams. Most of the water areas are privately owned. And in order to actually get on them, you can float them. And you can float across other folks' properties, even though they might not own the better banks. But access is always an issue and a concern. So we're always looking to improve access to water. Number one. Number two, we do know that the town has significant land holdings in that core creek corridor. So we're always looking for improvements in that, but any improvements from a recreational perspective is always a good thing. So when when Mr. Gunner called us up and said, you know, this is what we're looking at, we got, I know Don Owens personally. Don is actually the co-author, main author of the Erie County Soil Survey, which is essentially my Bible. So we know Dodd very well. We do know some of the Owens Falls and the West New York Land Conservancy holdings that they have. Some of the scenic views in the area. So we do knew, we did know that he owned that property and was looking to potentially donate it. And so I'm glad it's it's gone through. And yes, we're definitely interested in participating to assist the town to essentially improve recreational opportunities in that area. So the conversations were essentially, of course, everything folds around dollars and cents. You know, I've worked with supervisor Gunner before on a number of different occasions. He kind of knows what we can do and I know what he can do. I think there's definitely some opportunity there to have some in-kind contributions from the highway department and we can assess with permits and preliminary plans. The other issue is there's a couple of funding opportunities that come our way. That I think might be good opportunities to essentially, and again, I'm not looking at a huge. You know, we don't want to make this into a long drawn out, you know, large scale. You know, developed area. All we're talking about is a small area for a couple of parking.
Actually, if you could expand on that just a little bit, Mark, as far as is this just a stone driveway and a set of steps?
We're looking at newer kayak launch is essentially what we're looking at. So having a small parking area for two, maybe three cars. Right now, people basically illegally park at the Legion. I know they probably don't like that. There's people that access the water from that side. It's definitely a liability issue for the Legion. Of course, no one really says anything, but it's probably not the best. Sub signage would be beneficial. Everyone knows about the Leach Dam and that neck of the, well, most of the locals know about the Leach Dam. But basically preventing folks from heading downstream and impacting getting close to Legion Dam. So some signage, a small parking area, two, maybe three cars. Essentially a little bit of shaping and grading to allow car top canoe access and or kayaks to to enter a little bit of bank stabilization to the areas soils are the best there, but we can do some minor improvements. Of course, we would help with permitting and that sort of stuff. In order to allow access to the stream.
So it would just be essentially a parking lot with a stone trail down to the water and maybe six feet into the water, the stone I'm talking about or something like that.
Of course, the design process of it, but yes, the initial conversations that we were having is is two to three cars. A grade that allows access, which is essentially ten to one-ish. And then exactly how you put in, there's some opportunities and that's where your kind of cost can start to increase depending on what types of means that you put for that actually access, but we're trying to keep it small scale, limited maintenance. Not a huge endeavor. And this is where we go into the funding opportunities. So if you wanted the large scale opportunity, yes, there are funding opportunities out there. The grants process is a little bit more lengthy and a little bit more cumbersome. Then you get into larger scale dollars and cents. The conversations that we initially had that allows us to access one of the I think prime examples is is Lupa or the Lake Erie Watership Protection Alliance. Is they generally have some small scale grant funding opportunities on an annual basis. I am on the Lupa board. So I'm quite familiar with them and what types of projects they do, but essentially up to about twenty thousand dollars could be requested from there. Soil and Water District also has. I don't want to call it discretionary, but we call it essentially it's it's state funding that needs to go towards project work on the ground. Implementation of of conservation projects. Normally we folded into a lot of the project work that we're already working on, whether that be street mix stabilization or agricultural water quality best management practices. But yes, my board is generally very supportive of these types of projects that would have to go through them for review and approval. But that's also another potential funding opportunity to basically get a small pot of money and work with the supervisor highway super in order to try to get a project at a reasonable cost.
Is that grant on a one-to-one basis or or eighty, twenty or?
So the loop of funding, the Lake Erie Watership Protection Alliance. Technically, that funding does not have a match, but we like match. They are, they are state dollars. Essentially, these are monies that we get on an annual basis that get broken up between Erie Catch, Taqua County to do water quality, recreational opportunities, localized flooding concerns, the gamut of water quality implementation projects. So I think this one would rank very highly. The town is actually a member of the Water Quality Coordinating Committee, which is where we access these funds through. And you've actually, your Tannery Brook Project, Rain Barrel Project that Waterkeeper assisted you guys with, those were Lupa funds. So same pot of money, just different types of projects. So I would assist in writing the grant application. It's really just a two pager. Explain what you're going to do. Those are usually due in November. So and and then usually implementation the next year. So that would be my priority. I know when we originally talked, we do have some discretionary funds. I'll be honest with you, some of those discretionary funds that we have that we refer to as state reimbursement are going away rather quickly just based on cost overruns of current projects that we have going on. But I'm always looking for projects. So if this is something that we want to do in twenty twenty-two.
That's why you're there.
But yeah, there's definitely opportunity there and there's definitely some some fund funding opportunities that are available to assist along with some in-kind match.
Yeah, some that when we toured the property that we found that we didn't realize is the town does not own that whole area that is high and dry. It's all a major easement that was put in by Erie County for when they built the bridge. So most of this project isn't even going to be on town land, like the whole trail to the water and actually to put it won't be in town land either.
Which is a county to county owns.
County, right. So when we got down to the bank. Well, we're planning on checking to explain to you better, just cutting the bank and not having to drop off and just filling that with gravel. There's not going to be concrete. It's just going to be a primitive put-in. And then upstream and downstream to two-fold to protect the gravel, these major rocks put in there, just to kind of hold it. And also too, then bridge and button actually needs rocks too. So there is a erosion problem that the county needs to look at anyway. So it's kind of killing that too at the same time. And then it would be a trail like we did at Nature's Park or Sarah's Way, where it's literally just eight, six, eight foot millage trail covered with limestone dust all the way up to the parking area. So real primitive project. It also wouldn't be just kayaking. The folks would be fishing.
Could be fishing.
Part of it too. And then Mark has offered to do the whole design of the whole project. He's an engineer. So he would have to come to the board to.
I have an engineer on staff.
As far as when it gets to our land, most of the properties could be on Erie County right away. It's only a small portion of it is the donated land. Most of the donated land is swam land. When you get a chance to go over there, there's actually a concrete pillar that shows you the easement right away there and it's very large. So most of this will be there as far as the worries about insurance on the county land. But Mark is going to install a sign that says, don't paddle downstream here to go off.
I I did check with our insurance company too, and they said as long as you have proper signage up there, that's.
Yeah, there's some, we've we've done some research for other project work and there's some relatively very good water, essentially it's water trails for kayaks and a lot of signage that is directly rated for safety issues associated with that. So there's, we've worked with the county sign shop.
Yeah, there is cost to, you definitely need a creek guy or crews for the bridges. Just to look at it, it looks like a fifty thousand dollar job to me. Mark's pretty confident he can come up with twenty-five grand. I just want to make sure it's the board, one, four, it could be less. I'm just throwing a number out there. You need to get that. The big rock can be pretty expensive, but generally most of it's all just materials.
Yeah, we'll definitely find two. But I mean, an off the cuff number to try to come up with something.
We're not talking for next year. It's permitting, yes, the platform, the design. We have to have a meeting with the neighbors to make sure that, you know, their
One other concern that I would just want to address would be the ingress, egress of the going in out.
Yes.
Because of Legion Road being right across the street. And the Cando Road there, you're coming down the hill, you got Pietro, just just to make sure that, again, our job is to make sure everyone's safe. So.
To the board before that, but you're right, the guy realized there's a curve past. Yeah. Need to bring it down closer to the bridge. That's something we have to discuss with the Erie County Highway to make sure they're comfortable with. So this is more to bring Mark here, make sure if the board even wants to move forward, this is a lot of work to talk about and put it together.
If I could jump in real quick, I'm sorry. I know there's some neighbors here and I know you guys, I would have concerns too if it was next to me. And I have a couple of emails that Kirk Clerk Librock delivered. And just to be clear, as Dave said, we're not impacting the wetlands. The only area that's going to be impacted is the area immediately adjacent to the bridge, which is the higher land. It's not the the lower land. And there's no plan to remove any trees whatsoever. I don't think, I don't, when we were down there, I didn't see any trees that needed to be removed. Yeah, you haven't made a design yet.
Because we have to take in safety here, but we got to be able to turn cars around.
Yeah.
So there may be some.
But additional landscaping can be addressed as part of the plan too, whatever. We can make sure that the, you know, between the townhouses, I think is a technical term and the parking lot. Yeah, yeah. Oh, I agree with that a hundred percent. They got to come out for facing forward.
Well, current trailers, we're trying not to get that.
Yeah.
Right. Exactly. And that's the only vehicle there. Yeah, we're, again, we're trying to keep it small enough that you know, it's not a huge endeavor for for folks in and out, just because the space is limited.
So we have to do a design for the put-in. That's for the Army Corps of D.C.
And I think at least what I I would like to see, and I don't know with the rest of board. I think we'd like to see design and maybe then a public hearing or make sure that the residents have a say in what's going on and and input from them, I think is important. I trust everything Mark is, I mean, he's, he helped us immensely down down the creek ways. But I mean, once we do have a plan, it's kind of early in the in the process to to talk about it, but if if we have a plan, then we can bring it to the residents and they can and look at it and everyone can voice their concerns and.
I just want to make sure that instead of me calling individual board members to know what we're working on. No, no, I mean, so the loop of funding, again, that's generally an annual application. Generally October-ish and it's really just a two-page kind of write-up. Even for that, I mean, we would probably try to prepare some sort of conceptual design. So that's essentially what you're you're asking me is to say, let's let's put a conceptual design together, put something on paper and let folks, you know, have a look at it, have a crack at.
I think that would be the, in my opinion, that would be the next step.
Right. I just didn't want Mark to do all that work if we flat out.
I I have no problem as long as there's a design and and we hear from the the people that are affected by it. I don't know what the rest of the board.
Any need for signage on the center? Because the cars go a little bit faster with their approach of the village.
That's something we'll talk to them about.
Yeah, I think there's certainly a need considering how many kayakers and canoeers are down there currently. So there is a need to get a safe spot to launch. And it it does seem like a wonderful recreational opportunity. That being said, we we have to go through all of the usual things that we go through and I think anyone's trying to push anything through. So concerns of neighbors, concerns of residents in the town, everybody that needs to get their thoughts in to make sure that this project, if it goes forward, is one that is well thought out, I think is is obviously something that we will be doing. So there shouldn't be any concern about that. It's always difficult. Cart and horse, we need to have an understanding of whether we should move forward or not. And the idea is good. So as far as I'm concerned, we've been talking about this for a couple of years now. The idea is good and I would like to explore moving forward with it, if that's the answer you need from from me today.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we don't have adamant, nobody would like to do it. So there's no sense.
I I'd just like to say though, for my, from my end of it is I'd like to hear how many people actually use this and how many people would get put in, paddle upstream and move down. Joe and I, Councilman McCann and I were talking about this a couple of weeks ago, or a week and a half ago or whatever. How many people do that? I have no idea. How many people put in at the Legion right now and paddle upstream? To paddle down because you can only go so far. I don't know. And I'd certainly also like to get the residents input to before I would say that I would be a yes vote.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point, but I think people are putting in everywhere along there, whether whether they're allowed to or not. But I think that's a good idea to know how many.
Usually, I mean, back in the day, we all did that. We all took the canoe, went down the creek. But you went, you put in up high, you paddled down the creek and, you know, ended up.
Well, there's no, as as we talked, there's really no current there because of the spillway. That's what makes it ideal for families, smaller kids. It's a very easy paddle. When you say going upstream, you technically are going upstream. You're not fighting any current. It's it's you're basically a break even going one direction versus the other.
And if that's the case and people are doing it, then then great.
That brings up a good point though. If if there's a lot of people that do it and we only have three parking spots, that could be an issue also. So I think a design, some discussion. Yeah, right. Thank you again, Mark, for coming out and and everything you've helped the town with before. It was.
Problem. I've been able to do some pretty good projects.
You have.
Yeah, I did have a question. You you guys did a tour of it. Initially, what are your thoughts on the soil of the area that would be affected, the soil that we keep here in swam land and higher land and lower land?
So. Yeah, so there is some definitely adjacent flood plain and wetland area on the bottom side. But.
And what is bottom side was it?
If you look at the property, the 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 lower elevate, if you go there, there's a signage at the road. There's the lower area, which actually is, it would probably be nice to, you know, throw a picnic table or something, some type of seating there because there's a lot of wildlife, the deer were and the birds that are in there are probably unique. The area that we're really looking to impact is is essentially the right of way, which is the sloped area adjacent to the road. Which has been filled and it's probably mostly fill material as as a part of the bridge project. So we do a lot of work with the county highway departments. Any additional, really the swing for them is, you know, listen, this is additional toe stabilization upstream of your bridge abutment. So it's additional stabilization essentially for their project. So I really don't, it's an easy pitch for me to say this is a benefit for you guys by them doing this type of project. So I think they would be very open to this type of project. But we still have to go through that process. So the the area is is really, it it would be mostly county right away essentially, which gives them a little bit more access to. So.
And then also would be at our risk too. So that part of not building funds is probably a good thing because of the road, the bridge need to be replaced. Essentially, all that could be ripped out. So that's why I don't think you want to be so elaborate here.
I agree. Doesn't need to.
As far as the kayak part, we're stuck.
A bench or two in there for people to relax as well, things like that.
Thanks. Thanks, Max, again for taking your evening, coming out here. Appreciate it. All right, next we have the West Falls Advisory Committee. Is anyone here? I don't see anybody. Maybe we'll put that on hold and go to the next thing building.
I I think, I mean, if we can talk about it, because we did get a response from Bridget. I know Connor is setting for the bar, so he's probably, he's not going to be here for a couple of weeks, but. The the materials that he sent over looked good to me, a committee of five with two alternates. I don't know if we need the alternates. But I think just maybe we can give Connor and the committee some direction. Do we agree with the format and I mean, we've made it an official committee now, I think, right? No, we haven't. So this would be a decision to make it an official committee and to appoint members who can vote and provide recommendations to the board. So another advisory committee. I think since we started a couple of years ago, it's had a lot of momentum. And I I think it's grown to a point where now we do need to take a step in that direction.
I think I agree with you. I think it's grown. I think it's wonderful. I think also with the development of two forty, that's going to happen. People are going to want to be heard. As far as that, so I I love a few changes in what he proposed, but yeah, I think overall, I think it'd be a great idea to do that.
So you, there's a few changes you like to see.
Small changes, like you know, in there, I don't have it right in front of me. For tonight, I looked in the email that he had sent us before, talked about having residents involved, which is important. I think also people that maybe have a business or have a, you know, an interest there.
So if there's some changes we want to make, is that something we want to table until he's here?
I mean, we can. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I think that's the the what we want to do is take a step forward if they're, no, not to vote, but if they're what if there are changes that anyone wants to make, we should talk about them or come up with a plan of how to push, not push it forward, but to let Connor know where you want to go.
Jim, it it says committee members must reside within the Town of Aurora and the West Falls region. Would you want to expand that to non-residents?
No, thanks for pulling up. No, it's not that. It was it was more, it was in the mission statement, actually. It was the the mission of West Falls Advisory Committee is to expand opportunities for West Falls residents, which is very important, but also I think for people maybe have a business there as well. So that's where I would add the language, or at least talk about adding the language. But having a person that live in the West Falls region is, I think, essential. Absolutely. Griffin Mills, that area.
Well, if we're going to make any changes, in my opinion, I think we should wait. Table it.
Yeah, no, I think we can, I mean, do we want to set it, set a date for making changes? So if any changes. I mean, I can certainly take the lead on this. We have the documents. Bridget reviewed them. They look good from her point of view. If anyone wants to make any changes, let's have the suggestions by next meeting and then we can talk about it next meeting and then vote the meeting following that when Connor will be back.
Very good.
Must be the end of July. So, but as far as the concept, I think we're all.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I just wouldn't want to vote on something without, you know, talking.
Is that our next step is is to, is to, I mean, do we need to put this into a local law and have a public hearing and so on?
Not a local law, but we would need to.
Establishing a committee. It's establishing the committee.
Yeah. Do we need to have a public hearing or we're just going to?
No, I don't think so. Public hearing on that.
No, just to, yeah.
Okay.
We just, we just establishment committee.
And and the rules are are in that document that kind of provided. Like an open space.
But I would like to make sure that we're on board with people that are running it and Connor and. Yeah, so if there are some changes, what's another couple of weeks if we do it?
Yeah, absolutely. If you guys are okay with that, I think so.
I'm I'm good with it, so. You guys are good. We'll move on to. Yeah, absolutely. Can can you bring her? We can bring you the microphone if you want. Yeah, that's okay. That's okay. Just talk into the mic if you could and give us your name and address.
My name is Vanessa Wazny, W A Z N Y, and I live in Lakeview, New York. Do you need my street address too?
Yes.
Five seven seven two West Lane in Lakeview, one four oh eight five. I was asked to come here tonight by Stephen DeBoer, who's Town of East Aurora resident. I'm the administrator of the Western New York Paddlers Group, which is a Facebook group with over eleven hundred paddlers in it. And I am one of the people who paddles the Cas Creek behind the American Legion quite frequently. Along with two people that I go with regularly. So maybe once or twice a month we go there. And it is a very lovely paddle to go upstream and is doable even when a lot of other creeks are low because of the dam. It's a very nature paddle. It's beautiful considering it's so close to development. You'd think you're in the middle of nowhere for certain parts. And when the water is a little bit high, you can almost get up to where the four hundred is. And we we have done that before. I've seen, I'm a canoeer, but I've seen lots of kayakers on there. And I've seen the stand-up paddle borders on there too. I've seen young people. I've seen people my age. I'm sixty-four. I've seen people older than me. The people I go with are seventy and. I've seen young people. I've seen people my age. I'm sixty-four. I've seen people older than me. The people I go with are seventy and seventy-three. I've seen families. I've seen little kids. So it is a wonderful resource. Now, yes, I don't live in East Aurora. I live in Lakeview. My sister lives in East Aurora. But it, and the two people I go with, uh, live in Eden and Springville, but it brings people to town. And then when you come through town, you stop and you buy things, and you stop and you eat, and you stop and you visit people you know. And it's, it makes it a nice trip. So when Stephen heard, Stephen couldn't be here tonight because he had to be out of town. When he heard that you were thinking about this, he just wanted me and himself to put our weight behind this project and to say that it would be quite a great thing if this does come to pass and that we're entirely behind it. And if you need to talk to anybody who's had a lot of experience with launches all over the place, because I've been paddling since two thousand and four, and I know most of the people in the paddling community, and so does Stephen. Stephen's a whitewater guy, though. I'm a flatwater person. Um, we'd be very happy to help in any way that we possibly could, if you want to discuss launches. And I absolutely agree with you when you talked about keeping it simple, just, uh, grade into the water. We have, um, had somebody who slipped and fallen at the launch that, the sort of unofficial launch that exists now over behind the Legion. It's one of the slipperiest substances known to mankind over there, that mud. And, uh, it is really treacherous to get in and out. So we just wanted to say that we're a hundred percent behind you. If there's anything we can do to help, we'd be happy to. It is a creek that is very popular with people, and it's a beautiful resource that you have, and we're a hundred percent behind it. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we're going to go right to number three, and, uh, Liz is going to tell us about the permit fees.
Okay, so I gave you a revised, uh, sheet. And Marge did a little bit, uh, made a couple of corrections on the right-hand side, and I eliminated some of the ancillary discussion that was, uh, on the earlier document. But what you can see here are, the items in red are the permits that we're proposing, permit fees were proposed and changing, and some of them are new as well. Uh, we looked at a multitude of municipalities around, uh, our area, similar sizes. Um, you know, from Lancaster and Clarence, Eden, Evans, um, several other ones as well, um, just to kind of give a gauge of what sorts of, um, what the range of permits are, and, and there is a wide range, um, but we think these are reasonable. And, um, are very similar to other municipalities. A couple of points to look at specifically, though. Our tower permits, if there's a new tower that comes in, I believe the last tower that came in, it was probably a site plan fee. Um, which is not on this sheet, but is still under, we're still looking at, um, site plan fees. Um, but so for a new tower, pretty much everyone has a very similar thousand dollar permit fee for a new tower. Um, additionally, you're going to have, um, seeker fees associated with a tower, uh, that sort of thing. We haven't had a new tower in a while, but what we do have regularly are antenna replacements, equipment upgrades. We have probably six to eight of those permits a year. Um, and right now it's a fifty dollar fee. Uh, other municipalities run from anywhere from a hundred up to five hundred dollars for replacing of equipment, but we settled on, I think, a hundred and fifty dollars is a reasonable fee. Typically, what happens in that is they submit a paper or they submit a permit application, it'll be verized and wireless, we'll submit it. They're the owners of the equipment. Somebody else owns the tower, and a third entity does the actual work, um, and we don't hear from them until the permit expires. So we're, we spend some time chasing around those permits to make sure that they're closed. Um, and, um, and so there is time that's spent, um, in addition to reviewing all of their engineering documents. Um, we did include a new fee for floodplain development. Uh, the town does not have that. Um, well, we have floodplanes, obviously. Um, but we've not had a floodplain development permit fee. Um, so that is, um, identical, identical to the village's floodplain development fee. Um, I included some SWIP fees, um, based upon acreage of the project, SWIP review fees. Um, the engineering firm, both, um, the end of town's engineering firm and my office do those reviews. Um, and then, of course, the seeker. Uh, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of things happening, not so much right now in town, but there is future development. Um, you know, we talk to people all the time. Um, and then still there's site plan fees. Um, our site plans are, our site plan fees are low in comparison to other municipalities, so I'm looking at how to propose that for you as well, but.
This, how, how do we read this, uh, Excel? So the application fee is that, that's what currently is the fee?
No, um.
Because there's three columns, yeah.
So the, on the right-hand side, it'll show you what the difference is per permit. So it would be, right now, the application fee for a one-two family is a fifty dollar fee, and it's, uh, thirty-five cents a square foot is how we charge for our permit fees. So we're proposing a twenty-five dollar increase, um, for the application fee, and then fifteen cents per square foot. Up to fifty cents.
And did you happen to run it? What, what would this generate on an annual basis roughly? Can possibly?
I can't, no. Um.
So, yeah, sorry. So that the, if you take a look at the commercial residential edition.
Right.
The, the current fee would be sixty minus ten, so fifty dollars.
Yep.
And then.
It's thirty-five cents a square foot.
Thirty-five cents, yeah. Okay.
Did you look at the fee for fire inspections?
I did. I did, and, um, and I've gone around and around and around on that. Um, and, and what I've come back to is without an accurate, without a operating permit for a business, any and all businesses in the town. Um, it's difficult to get those fees back. We could potentially put a fee on here that, you know, your first inspection is, there's no charge for that, and a reinspection, there's no charge for that if something is wrong, but if we have to come back a third time because you haven't fixed it, then we could look at that, but I, I just felt like it was a, um, a potential hardship for our businesses.
Yeah, and, and I'm not, I would have probably agree with you, but I didn't know what other towns were doing as far as fire inspections.
They are listed on a lot of municipalities as operating permits, and, uh, fire inspections are inclu- oftentimes included in that operating permit. They also do call them out separately, um, but those are also in towns where there are operating permits.
Personally, I would not like to see a, a, a fee for, for that unless you have to go back three times, because they should have the opportunity to fix it, and after three times, come on.
Right. And I will say that our fire, we don't have very many re-inspections. A re-reinspection. And, and, um, you know, Paul Keelik has do, been doing a phenomenal job of getting through. He's been through the towns in, uh, fire inspections, and he's uh, working his way through the village. That's nearly complete. So we'll be caught up finally for the first time since COVID, um, which is a really good thing. Um, and now he's just following up on making sure everything's compliant. Um, so that's why that fee is not proposed at this point in time.
So we have these fees, but we just got them. Um, do you guys, um, want to take a couple of weeks and look at them before we do?
I wouldn't mind chewing on them a bit, just because it's brand new. I don't want to overlook something.
Do you ever, Liz, do you ever get into commercial projects where there's engineering or, um, special inspections that aren't covered? In other places that we end up on the hook for?
Um, no, special inspections are generally called out in the, um, in the, uh, construction manual. Uh, you know, and it says in there who does those special inspections. Um, so, so we get those reports from the various entities for the larger scale projects that we have. Um, but no, I think that if we had a project like that, that would be a fee that we would have to, if there's engineering outside of, you know, any of these basic permits, then
Right.
that would have to be discussed prior.
Which we've done. We've done. We've added fees for engineering.
And I think that's more along the site plan line of things versus these are, are almost our day-to-day permit fees.
Okay. The, the expansion of the five G network was something that was talked about last year. Um, I think it was an article in New York Towns. Is that something that's happening? I guess it's not a tower. It goes on the phone, telephone post or something?
Typically, they put them on telephone poles, yeah.
Does that cause a lot of work or possibly cause a lot of work in the future or?
Um, I haven't seen any go up, um, in either the village or the town at this point in time. I know they're out in Colden. They're starting to move further out, um, but I haven't seen anything going up locally.
Is that something we would want to look into before it happens or?
Well, there was an opportunity for the town to regulate some of the five G.
Yeah.
Um, but the town did not. Um, the village did. Um, and we would just, um, that would be a co-location or new equipment. The small, the small wireless, um, five G equipment.
So no need to, so we can't do anything?
Well, you, I think a couple of the things that the village had the opportunity to weigh in on, they did, and, and I'm not sure what the town can say at this point in time for five G.
And I think a couple of things that we have to look at is, is your proposal here, and, um, also your request for the software.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
So I think if, if we, if we took a couple of weeks and maybe in the next meeting, take a look at that and and make a decision, is it, um, is it okay with the board?
Sure. It's fine. I don't, I don't know if Liz is ready for the proposal on the software yet anyway.
Oh, I'm totally ready.
Now you're ready?
Oh, I am, yes. And, um, they're going to extend that, um, the quote through the end of July, um, for us, so uh, they had said that it was valid through June, but it is valid through July. Um, so if we can.
So if we made a decision.
Talk about it next.
Next meeting, okay.
That would be good. Um, and what I can do is maybe we can run some comparisons about, um, you know, what we did last year on permits, um, and then, you know, just run the numbers and see what we could, um, what the difference could potentially be, if you'd like. That would be helpful at all.
Yeah.
And the, the permitting, uh, fees that you have on the seeker are, are brand new. What, what thoughts, uh, do you have, you know, when you were contemplating what the fee might be, or why there'd be a need for the? I assume you're doing a lot of work with them, but.
Well, so for something that's a type-one action, those seeker reviews are going to be handled entirely by the engineering firm.
Right.
Um, and that, uh, really, these are covering their time, um, and their expertise to make sure that that review is uh, as it should be. So larger projects are going to take more time. There are more components that you have to consider on a larger project because it's, it's just a big project. So these are pretty comparable for, um, for project sizes, zero to five acres and the, and, and up. Um, but basically those fees would offset the engineering fees that we have.
Okay, so we've been paying the engineering fees in the past without reimbursement?
No, no, we've not been paying them without reimbursement, but the way that they're, it's the way their contract was written, um, and I, I believe that they were encouraging us to re-review our fees. It's like Martha maybe want us.
Okay. Are we good?
Yep.
Thank you. Thanks for doing all that, uh, that work. Next, we have the EV charging stations, uh, Mr. Bork from UV and Dave.
Thank you, Matt. We try to get you up as soon as possible. I apologize to take so long on such a lovely evening.
Is it Mark? Mike? Matthew? No, I'm getting close.
Yeah, so this is a few weeks ago at the last board meeting, the board asked me to look into this further, so I was able to get Matt to come out from UV, whatever your title, um, to look at different sites around town, to see the feasibility of them. So we did look at, uh, four locations. One was the highway garage, one was the community pool, one was the West Falls Dam site, and one was the current town hall. Uh, we decided not to look at Warren. There's just no infrastructure there. I, and I guess I'll let you take over. You felt there are also should be improvements in Silvermore.
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Again, I am, I'm Matt Burke from the UV Regional Institute. Uh, some of you may know my colleague, Jason Kulashewski. Uh, he and I both support the nicer, clean energy communities program, which I know the town has had a lot of success in, as well as, um, the DEC's Climate Smart Communities Program, kind of the sister program. So, um, yeah, as Mr. Gunnar was saying, I met with him and Councilman McCann and Mr. Vizo on Friday, and uh, we discussed kind of this grant opportunity for the zero emission vehicles program to install EV infrastructure uh, in the town. We discussed these locations. Um, you know, it's, it's a pretty good grant program, provides eighty percent of funding for, uh, these electric vehicle, um, charging stations. The twenty percent local match is a lot of opportunities, uh, through utilities and other things to kind of make that up. So it's, it's essentially a low or no cost, uh, opportunity for communities to install EV infrastructure. I know, um, you know, there's, the town has a a charger out here, and there are some ongoing challenges, maintenance issues that are part of that, and you're obviously familiar with that at this point, but, um, but again, we think it's a good opportunity. Um, I think the locations we've discussed make a lot of sense, and um, I'm happy to answer any other questions about the program that there are or kind of our role. I, I did want to comment that, um, one of the things we discussed is just how I and Jason can assist the town, uh, with the application. That's part of our charge is to provide guidance and work with Mr. Vizo and, um, you know, be an extra set of hands to kind of help the town get the application and, and any other info that might be necessary. So, um, that was all I really wanted to share. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Um, but you, did I cut you off?
No, go ahead.
I was just thinking of, uh, our biggest headache, the maintenance and the ed, admin.
Yeah.
For the, is that something a town would be responsible for or?
So there's some flexibility there. Um, there's a lot of flexibility in terms of both kind of like hardware and software and who you would choose to partner with. That's not really prescribed. There's a lot of flexibility in the grant program to kind of choose who you would want to go with. And I think different communities handle it differently. Some kind of outsource it all, some manage it themselves, some charge, you know, users, some don't. Ultimately, someone would be responsible for it, and if the town's applying for the grant, they would probably ultimately be responsible, but, um, I guess there are, there's some flexibility to that.
I think what he's saying is that you could use that same company that we just signed on with.
Okay.
Or you could use any company. There's multiple manufacturers. But before we finally move forward with the grant, we kind of have to decide where, where you'd want to go.
Yeah.
It's a legit question.
So we would pay the electric, we would administer. You guys, you guys would fund, you would put a grand in for the equipment and the installation at a twenty percent match, said?
No, it'd be a hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
Two grants. The one is eighty percent, but coupled with the utility grant of the site ready at NISAC is what he's saying.
For each unit?
For each unit. So there's no cost to the town to have these installed. And then on top of that part of the grant, there's potential of some free electricity for.
You can apply for up to two years.
Up to two years of free electricity on top of that. So there's a lot of grant opportunities, and the reason I brought it to the board now, unlike the one you did for this year, it's, uh, limited to the end of September, the grant ends. And right now, these are getting grabbed, so it probably wouldn't even make it to September. So I wanted to see if we are interested. Liz has written these easy grants before. She's been successful with our recycling programs. She's confident she could handle it, and Matt's offered to actually walk her through it. Just comes down to, is this what we want to do? They're, they're free. You want to do it. And then the next step is decide how do we want to manage it. No, so it's again, it's like a boat launch, well, work if we don't want to do it.
Yeah.
It's.
What, so I, I, you rattled off all those places are pretty quick. Dave, was one of those, the West Falls Library?
No, it was the dam site.
The dam site.
Right. Where the.
Okay, so that would mean a new service. Right? Because there's no electricity there.
Yes, there is. There's electricity that lights up the dam.
Oh, there is, okay.
Yeah. These are these sites.
Has, has a service.
We actually have a service right at the tennis court, community pool with the meter right there too. We were shocked that literally you could put one right there.
Okay.
Very little, because remember we talked at the last meeting, I was concerned.
I've run in the power.
Out there.
Yeah.
So that's what we did is we went site by site just to see what the infrastructure was there, and they were all good sites on the highway garage to be basically where the, you know, the problem comes. Again, if we want to, the benefit to the highway garage is if we, as we probably will in two or three years, start converting already the highway department, we can use that then immediately. We don't have to pay the fees or anything. So we will have that ability. I guess it's just one thing that, you know, like I said, the last meeting is these grants are going to go away as EV gets more popular. They're not going to give away for free. Do we want to jump on board?
Would, would that be, let's take the highway garage specifically. Would that be at the same rate that, that the, that the public gets sold at? And I, I only say that because if we have, we end up with electric trucks, right? And you're going to be charging there. Right now you get fuel
Yes.
At, at a good rate.
It's a good question, Chuck. I guess, Martha, do we get tax free on our electric bill now? Because it's really no different than whatever our electric bill is now. It's a good question. I never thought about it, but you're right. Fuel, we don't pay the sales.
Right, right. And then my other quick question was, you mentioned hydrogen in here?
Yeah. So hydrogen is part of this grant opportunity. I'm not as familiar with that component of it, not as many communities that we are talking to about it are kind of going that route, but it is part of the program. If the town are interested.
Any idea what percentage of cars out there or vehicles out there are running on the hydrogen program?
It's very small.
Very small.
EVs kind of skyrocket at this point. There's a lot of interest there. I, I have not read about the same, same uptake of hydrogen at this point.
Okay.
My, my limited, very limited understanding is that it's more popular on the west coast, but one of the I think one of the problems of that we, is that we don't have hydrogen filling stations.
Right.
That's really what the big problem is. They're cheaper.
Yeah.
The cars go a whole lot longer.
Clean.
Minutes, a couple of minutes to five, six minutes to charge versus half an hour. And I, you know, again, I don't know that much more about it than, than just the service.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
It's coming.
I think it is coming. I think that's something that I, I know kind of electric, the EVs are getting shoved down our throat a little bit. But I think it might be worthwhile looking into that. Maybe not the same as data and VHS, but I think there's a things are better than others, but they get shoved down your throat. But if they aren't, if your state is offering, you know, component, the, the, the unit, things like that, maybe that's something else to look into as well.
I think it's a good, I think grants are great. I, the management part of it and Liz will tell you. Charge point is, is not, not easy and that's one. So I would, that would be my only concern, the management of it.
We talked about it, me and Liz, if the town did want to move forward with these new stations, it probably would fall where we would probably have to be managing because we have the staff.
No, I'm not, and I'm not saying that Liz couldn't do it. It's just, it's, it's, she's done a very good job. It's just they were a very hard company to deal with.
And the other thing we discussed at the meeting was, I think we would want to charge a fee that would allow us to enter into a maintenance agreement on these units. I don't think we want to be worrying about when they stop or when they go or when something stops charging. I think that would be, have to be tied in any sort of pricing structure that we can pick up the phone and say, hey, we got an issue with this unit. Come on out here and tell us what's going on.
Right.
The, the correct way it works is, is we apply for it now. They awarded probably around the beginning of the year. So this is a year off before we actually do anything. So it's not something that's like the boat thing where do we want to move forward? This is a year off. We do have to decide which brand, like you said, ChargePoint or do you want to lease management? They wanted a long-term contract for the rest of the new ones. So it may come down to where we would have to manage them and just rely on fees. Now, you look at, will there be the demand? Like say in West Falls, will people use it enough even with a markup to pay for it? So there's a lot of mystery to it. How about the pool? Really? It comes down to it, if nobody uses it, you're not going to recoup
Right.
Long-term maintenance.
Yeah.
It's, it's definitely, you gotta, it's hard decision.
And as far as a grant, I mean, Martha is doing a lot of our grant writing too, which she partner with Liz is it? I mean, because, because Martha does a great job doing that. So I'd like to see her involved with that.
Do the, do the grants require that the units be placed on town land, public land, or could they be placed on private land as well?
They can be placed in private land. They do need to be publicly available. I, maybe eighty percent of the time or a hundred, they do need to be publicly available, but you can do an easement or something if you wanted to put them on public or privately.
You, you can also get a grant through NISEC for half the cost if we literally put them just in the highway garage and not available to the public. So, but then they don't cover as much. We're just not quite there yet though.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So is this all too soon? I guess that's why we want to ask the board, do you want to apply for these or do you? And if so, where do you want them applied for? We have no risk. We can back out if, say, we win them and say we don't want to going forward. But I think that's
So there's no contract? There's no?
It's just matter, do we want to do the work that I?
Martha, do we have to vote on going ahead? Well, you already have, you already have locations.
Well, these are just ideas. It's up to the board, the ones that you like. Like over here at the town hall, there's no room to put another one next to the current one. We looked at it. You'd have to probably saw it cut the driveway and put it across by the dumpster. I mean, that, that would be actually the hardest one to do. So if you don't want to do that and leave off town hall, or is there a demand at town hall? I don't know. I'm not here enough to know. Are we, have lines out the door for these things or? The easy ones would be the pool right by the tennis court. That's a very simple one. A little wary about the West Falls one, the weather, is it going to get the usage? I think that's the big mystery.
Okay, so there has been discussions, sorry, informal with West Falls Center for the Arts, but also with the fire hall across the street that, that would provide the electricity if they had the stations there because there are, those are pretty frequently used. Or even a place like the Blueberry Farm, a couple of doors down.
Well, that's, I mean, it's up to you. Now, the highway garage, I think it's different. I think public probably won't use it very much.
Right.
But if you're looking for the fact that, you know, now that the lightning's out and Chevy's coming next year, probably within two or three years, we probably will be converting our fleet over. And will that at least have two stations for free? Obviously, that's parking truck outside at night, which you didn't have.
Will those, are you talking about the larger trucks or your?
The larger ones. No, no, the pickup trucks.
Larger trucks.
Coming next year. It's pretty much for a town, it's a perfect fit. We only do about seven thousand miles a year with our vehicles. Electric will be a big hit for us. I mean, we'll save a ton of money.
Well, I don't know how we're going to do it too fast.
I personally, I think out of the, and we went and looked at all these locations. I think the pool park is with the new pickleball courts, tennis courts, the bathrooms, the baseball, the pool, those will get used. I, I really would be shocked. Yeah, yeah, you're right, right. Have here in the summer.
Not so much in order, but throughout the summer, probably a lot.
Yeah, yeah. And people would probably still park there and go on their walks or whatever. So I, so what do we have to do? We have to decide right now what, how many locations do you want to apply for?
Your deadline's November thirty.
I would like to talk to West Hall Fire, see if they'd be interested. Because that would actually, now that you mention it, that would make a little more sense in that. Because it's more central to, because even
Are we allowed to put that in the fire department because we don't own the property?
Um, I mean, you'd have to work out an agreement with them and it would have to be publicly available, but I believe you would be allowed to do that.
Okay.
See, they, they might not want public cars parked.
Yeah, that's
Blocking their fire.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't at all, except they do have this side lot that they were going to put the building or that there's, I'm not quite sure if that building's going to go there.
Cars in the wrong spot, they can't get a fire truck out.
Exactly right. Yeah. So that's why.
So you want to hold off on town hall for, or you're capping with the one you have here?
Well, um,
Does it, does it, was it being?
Tonight, we can, again, we can look at this for next, you want to guys want to look at this for next meeting? Come up with, all right, let's do that.
Because I mean, it's just a lot to throw at us in, in five minutes.
Well, I, I, I think we can, we, we agree that the, the community pool is a good one to move forward on.
Right.
Are we ready to say you start working on the grant for at least that one?
Or would it be one grant with multiple locations?
You would end up, each location would have its own application technically in the program. But if you started work on one, obviously, you know, you could kind of duplicate that.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I mean, if we all agree that the community pool would be one, we can start. And if highway, if you think that one is necessary.
Like I told you, I think within two years of talking to the viewers, the lightning is going to be available. It's, it's deniable. And then Chevy is actually putting out a real work truck.
Yeah. So I'm, I
My, yes.
Yeah, a little uncomfortable after what you said about the town hall here. I think we need some more thought on that. And West Falls, like we said last time, also a little uncomfortable, but those other two, I think we can, let's move forward on those at least. And then next meeting, we can talk about the, the remaining two.
So you do want to have Liz start working with Martha.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
We have nothing of those. Could run out of money by the time, or what you're telling me, all the towns are rushing for five. When I was at that meeting, Jim, that you missed, there was a number of them raised there inside Athens. I know for a fact. You know, every town is, because it's free. You're going to get freezing and free when you get in. So we're going to move forward on.
Yep. And then we can look at, next, next meeting, we'll look at other sites.
So you have to put on that the agenda to vote on it now or, or when we get to our regular meeting?
Do we need to vote on it?
I don't think we need to vote on it, do we, Martha?
Usually you vote to authorize applying for a grant.
Okay. Well, then we'll add it.
Are there fees to apply for the grant?
No, I don't.
We, um, who will take it upon themselves to talk to the fire company?
In West Falls?
In West Falls. If we, if we are considering that, let's, yeah. Okay, Jim's got that.
I got that.
All right. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming out.
Thanks, Matt.
Give Jason our regards.
Yeah.
All right. Next five is the comprehensive plan resolution. Actually, um, Joe, you wrote this resolution. Maybe you want to read it.
Do you want me to read the whole thing or just so therefore?
Even though that it got grammatically fixed.
I wrote it very quickly. I was trying to get something out of the door at noon on Friday.
But I'm trying to give you credit for it. So this is, this
Friday resolution.
Resolution is to go ahead and apply for that grant to go ahead and revisit our comprehensive plan. And Joe actually put together the resolution. And if you want to read, if you want to read the whole thing, go ahead.
Oh, we'll give the audience a real treat. Whereas the town of Aurora has engaged the services of Wendell Companies to apply for the Smart Growth Community Planning Grant through the New York State Consolidated Funding Application on its behalf. And whereas the town of Aurora is committed to preserving its rural residential identity while planning for potential changes to its energy needs, climate, population, demographic makeup and other unforeseen events. And whereas the town of Aurora recognizes that it should preserve green spaces for use by its residents and for the benefit of our environment. And whereas the town of Aurora understands that planning requires a deliberate hand to achieve the desired outcome. And whereas the town of, the Aurora Town Board believes that all stakeholders should have the opportunity to provide input as to their desired future of our community and its role in the region, therefore be it resolved that the Aurora Town Board commits to drafting a new comprehensive plan, should we be selected for the Smart Growth Community Planning Grant, and we further commit to allocating an amount not to exceed eight thousand dollars for the town's ten percent share of the cost to retain the services of a professional entity to assist with the creation of a new comprehensive plan. And that eight thousand dollars was, he said it'd be between fifty and seventy thousand dollars, but he was unable to provide a quote before I had to get this in. So I just bumped it up by a thousand to cover our bases.
The other, only other thing that I would add to that resolution is, whereas at eight thousand dollar, what budget line would that eight thousand dollars be coming from? Are we going to use our funds for that? They're coming from contingent?
Yeah, certainly. That would, that'd be a
I think we can use our
Because that's a one time. It's not like, like you were saying, Chuck, I don't think we're going to use our for ongoing expenses, but for one-shot expenses, I think that's a
But we need to know where, where that's going to be applied from. Kathleen will need to know. So you know, I mean, we can, there's a number of places we can take it from.
Yeah.
I know that our funds are available for that. Contingent would be available. We just need to know where that would come from.
So we need to add that to the resolution or when we vote on it, do we identify that budget line item?
Do I need to know that tonight? Probably, right? Or not until we spend it. Until we expend it. All right.
Now we're just approving.
I guess we won't need it till we expend it.
Perfect.
Okay, so we can put this on our, it's already on our new business to vote to adopt this, right?
Perfect.
Okay. Is everyone good with that? Uh, local law video conferencing, our town attorney isn't here tonight, so we need probably some direction from her to go ahead and start that. Do you have any, does anybody have any information on it more than I have?
I mean, yeah, I think we, I think we want to do it. So we have it on the books in, in case we need it. There needs to be a minimum of three people here in order for it to be a, considered.
There's a whole, I mean, it's very, depends on how you read all the laws now. I'd, I'd rather have our town attorney read them and direct us on doing it.
I think, yeah, we let her come up with a draft and
All right. All right. Next is the planning board recommendations on dwelling groups. They met on July seventh, or I'm sorry, it's July sixth, two thousand twenty-two planning board meeting. The filing motion was made in order to initiate a discussion about allowing dwelling groups and zones other than agricultural. Angela Griffs, Griffs moved to recommend to the town board that dwelling group special use permits be added to rural residential and residential zoning districts. Douglas Crow seconded the motion and it was approved. Discussion.
If I could.
Yes, you can.
So this was in response to the referral, the zoning change referral on Transit Road. That parcel was previously zoned fully agriculture until the two thousand seventeen zoning change, where the three hundred, first three hundred feet now are rural residential. This particular lot is just over three hundred feet long. So the majority of this property is now in the rural residential zoning district. They have requested that zoning change to, to, in order to construct a separate dwelling unit in, in existing accessory building on the property for parents. So this is a conversation, their, their conversation revolved around and kind of was hung up on precedent. And they're very concerned about setting a precedent for rezoning in order to build two houses on one lot. And so I made the suggestion of a dwelling group being added as a use perhaps to the rural residential zoning district. Or dwelling groups being added as a special use by special use permit as they are already in an R three and the agricultural districts. And Martha, you included this. This was from the Association of Towns magazine, very appropriately, you know, sent out in June. May and June of two thousand twenty-two. The village does have an accessory dwelling unit provision in their code. And it's specifically for the smaller residential units for aging parents, so that they can stay in the village, stay on their property, but not necessarily in, in the main home. They have a limit to the number of bedrooms that they have on there, but not a square footage limit. And it can be as a part of the residence, you know, either within the residence or in addition to. It can be in a separate building, either new or a converted building. And they have certain guidelines on there. There are also statements where they have to say that they will never subdivide that property. And a property owner has to live in one or the other of the residences as their full-time residence. So the zoning or the planning board is really concerned about setting a precedent and would hope that a And would hope that a discussion about potentially adding a dwelling group as a use to the RR and the R one district. Um, if you think that that would be an appropriate move.
I do, I do think it would be an appropriate move to do that. I mean, uh, up until we changed everything into the RR's. Which was only in the A districts, you could have done it then. So um. Although I would like to get together with some people and maybe discuss some parameters that we have on it, just as, as you say, as the village head. I was tossing around all the things that they listed from the, from the Association of Towns sheet there. Some are good, some are, yes, I can, I can see where that's maybe a little restricted, but that's my, that's my thoughts. Is I think it's an appropriate move, but let's just take a meeting or two to, to make sure that. You know, maybe we put a size restriction on it. Maybe we lower the minimum or the, well, the minimum right now is twelve hundred feet. Maybe we lower that.
The RR districts are limited to that first three hundred square feet, right?
Yeah.
So I think we need to talk whether RR is appropriate for that. I mean, that's not a very large lot, right? You're talking about that strip that's in front, so. In this case specifically, I guess we, we could talk, not, in this case specifically, is there agriculture behind it? They just want to put it within the RR or is there not any agriculture behind it that they would be able to put that in?
In the Transit Road property, uh, they have a tiny sliver of agricultural. However, in order to have a dwelling group, it has to be in the, in the A, which means both residences have to be in the agricultural district. So you can't have one house in the RR and one house in an A. Because in order to have a dwelling group, they would both have to be in the A district. It's prohibited in an RR. And not all of the, sorry, Joe, um, not all of the properties in the RR district are small. I would say that our R one zoning district are definitely smaller. You're talking about the north part of town. So um, um, the Deepwood area and over in Hillcrest, those are some smaller lots. There are some larger ones too, um, on Mill Road, uh, that first, well, actually all the way out almost. Um, but so some, the RR lots, we have all sizes of RR lots. Um, and some of them have agricultural behind and some of them don't.
And that secondary dwelling, that accessory dwelling still has to meet the setbacks, right, Liz?
Well, yeah, yeah, we still have to be.
So whether there's, you know, another dwelling on that, but it's still within the setbacks, I don't know. Is that's, and again. Five years ago, you could have done it because it was all A. That was before we went to the RR's.
Right.
Six.
Yeah, I think there's just a lot of issues to look through. So are these, could these buildings in theory be used for Airbnb then as well as a secondary?
Um, you can um restrict that. It's not a lot, I mean, in order. In the town, you're allowed a B and B, but that has to be an owner occupied residence. Um, the village has stated that you cannot utilize an accessory dwelling unit as a short-term rental. You can rent it for someone's primary residence. That's not prohibited, but you can't do it as a short-term rental.
What, and I thought the dwelling groups in A districts were restricted to like six months of the year or something. Am I wrong about that?
No.
They weren't intended for migrant farm work or where did I read that? Am I?
Oh, I don't know.
Put you, I brought it somewhere and I'd like you to find where that was.
I don't know where that is. Um, no, a dwelling group, dwelling group allows for two separate residences on the same lot. Okay, um, the RR district, you can have a single-family residence or you can have a two-family residence, but that two-family residence is attached. Right, so um, this would just be separating those two dwelling units.
And is there a size restriction on the second unit, uh, location restriction that would all we would need to, we would need to think about that and put that into?
You could potentially, yes, you could limit the size of that dwelling unit. Um, right now, the minimum building size for a residence is twelve hundred square feet in the town. Um, the village doesn't limit the, regulate the size of the building, but they limit it to one bedroom. Because they're really looking at it as this is an accessory dwelling unit. It's not a full second house on here.
Right, and I think we would want to go along the same lines, really. You wouldn't want to allow two houses. Right? So I agree, I mean, we lot to think about, like we need to get the, get the old gang back together and.
Who wants to join Chuck?
So, yeah, I think we can.
Luke and Chuck.
Yeah.
Getting the band back together.
Yeah, and, and Liz, if we have, if there's any um, any code that you've seen is a starting point. To send that over to us.
Sure, I can send you some examples.
Again, Luke, we've, this has been part of our code. So until we put the RR into the code there, they could have done it. That person on Transit Road could have, could have done this.
Yeah, my, my whole life is post RR, so I don't know what it was like before then. So I'm just working within the.
We're not, you know, reinventing the wheel here. It's, it's, it's what could have happened before, so.
I will say that we have a lot of calls to our office for this exact same situation where the houses are very, you know. Regardless of the size of the lot, the house that's existing is in an RR and they've got an accessory building that they would love to convert for Grandma and Grandpa to come and stay. Um, so that we can take care of them and vice versa. And, you know, it's just not, it's not possible by the zoning code today.
My, I only concern, I think it's, I, from a compassionate standpoint, I think it totally makes sense. I just want to make sure that the neighbors' rights are protected. And that these have, you know, architectural integrity and they're, you know, not to shacks or something, which I don't think they would be.
According, you know.
So they have the same building.
Codes, they're going to have to have, you know, uh, all utilities, septic systems. Um, and, and that, so it doesn't matter what the size is, it still has to be a habitable structure.
I guess, and I guess we moved away once, I mean, I'm sure there's a solution to this, as Chuck said, it's, it's happened before. This was something that existed prior. But we've taken measures against flag lots and I wouldn't want this to become a de facto flag lot, even if it is, still remains as one lot.
Right.
Right, you want to somehow control that, so you're not.
And we have, we have had applications where the house was in the, was, was behind, they wanted to build another house in front or something or behind. And you're right, we, that's, that's, I guess the concern is that we don't want to have a workaround for building two big houses on a, on a lot. It should be according to what this is intended to be.
And this will go through a special use permit too.
That would be, that's their recommendation.
You know, it's, it's another line of difference, so.
Do the accessory buildings outside of the village typically share a driveway same?
Accessory dwelling units?
Exactly, the accessory dwelling unit.
In the village?
Outside of the village.
Oh, um. Oh, dwelling groups, yeah. I mean, many of them have common driveways.
Okay. So if it's not a common driveway, it's essentially just a second hole.
Potentially, yeah. You could put that as a restriction, one common driveway. Again, because we have those driveway requirements for flag lots for our ODAs.
Right.
So uh, safety is a, is a concern for that.
Why would you need a separate residence for a mother-in-law? I don't understand.
If anybody was listening, let's be sure that that was supervisor box.
Hello. Never mind. Uh, next, who? Uh, Strawberry Berry Banks Farm wants to have a fireworks display, um, and it would be. Um, let's see, what's the date, Mark? Seven thirty?
Seven thirty.
Um, they've done this before, um, never had a problem, um, they've got insurance and everything. We um. Never had an issue before, so.
No problems with the neighbors or anything, no complaints?
Uh, neighbors have never, neighbors kind of like it, actually.
Actually, a couple of the other neighbors did it after she did.
It's right in the middle of the property by the water, right?
Yeah, so they, um, I don't see a problem putting it on, it's already on there. Uh, anything else on the work session from anybody from the board? If not, we'll move on to the next meeting. Our regular meeting and we'll go right to number one, there are no public hearings. Number two. Uh, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two work session and meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck. Second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed and as carried and thank God these barriers are, and I can see you guys and hear you guys, so that's great. Next, we have audience and this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to come up uh to the mic and address the board on any items that are on the agenda. If you do wish to do so, please go with your name and address. Dave, you're, you're, you're out of time. If you could just talk into the mic or grab, I don't know if it works that way. Thank you.
Name is Paulette Berlinsky and I live at the Creekside Townhouses, Unit Eight. I've been there like sixty years and before that lived on South Street. Some of the concerns that you mentioned, one of mine is the traffic coming down center. There's beach coming up, going up center from south. I mean, there's a lot. And it just concerns me on that with the traffic. The other thing would be who would keep up the maintenance, I mean garbage and whatever, because you know, everybody loves to leave their garbage around. Um, I have security concerns. We know everything with our kids lately. Um, that would be a concern of mine living there. And also rules of enforcement, who would enforce times, whatever they can go in, I mean, in and out, early in the morning, late at night. And my other thing would be the privacy for the neighbors, um, for us. And also the impact on the wildlife. We live where it's absolutely gorgeous. I don't know if any of you have ever been there. But my backyard is the creek and it's beautiful. We have deer, we have fox, we have birds to galore. And that's a concern and somebody, I think you, Charles, Mr. Snyder, mentioned the need. How many people are there that really do use it? Not a lot. Not a lot. Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Could you, miss, could you hear your last name again? I'm sorry, it's on this end, Joe.
Berlinsky, B R Y, L I N, S K I, first name is Paulette, Creekside Townhouses, Unit Eight.
Unit Eight, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Also like to comment on the, uh, on the boat ramp kayak launch. My name is Gary Wit, W H I T T. I live three sixty Center Street, uh, Unit Six, Creekside Park Association. I look at that creek every day, uh, many times a day, hours a day. So not much gets by me. All it takes is a raccoon to dip their foot in that water. And there's, there's ripples up and down and I start looking for who's in the creek. So, you know, the, the kayaks going by, which I have no problem with. I, I think it's great. That's creek ownership. The more people that own that creek, the better. Uh, it's a good thing. Uh, so uh, when I see people going up and down the creek, I'm, I'm perfectly happy with that. Uh, I haven't had one issue with the people floating up and down that creek. Haven't seen one thing that's bothered me. Now as to use. This weekend I was counting and I was out on the deck a lot. My living room and deck are like fifteen foot from the ravine edge. I mean, I see from all the way from the far end of the sanctuary, the South Street Sanctuary, around the bend. Down to the old Center Street Bridge, which is the property line for the town's parcel and the association's lower parcel. So I see a big hunk of the creek and uh, it's, like I said, not much really can get by me. Even, you know, going to the bathroom, come back, they go one way, they always come back the other way because it's, it's a one-mile piece of creek. It's all there is, one mile. Done it myself and it is a pretty piece of creek, okay? And uh, I, I, I can't deny that, but there were three boats, three people. And one person per boat using it this weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, three. Okay, now last summer and the summer before, there was, there was a COVID bump. There was a lot more usage. The previous years before that, I've been there seven years, the previous years before that, it's, it's the same as it is right now. Maybe even just a tad more people, but we're talking about individual, you know, single digits per week. And people, it's not this sort of venue that's going to draw people again and again and again. Maybe a few people, but not many, not for a mile. If you live right here in the village, um, maybe. Okay, that's, that, that, that's great, but uh, to load that, load that kayak up and to take it and put it in. And then fifteen minutes, you're at the other end. I like, that's a few, just take it easy, fifteen minutes. You've run out of creek and fifteen minutes back. You can only do that so many times before, no matter how pretty it is. And now some of the, the really big trees are, are quite attractive. Uh, it's, 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 gets old. It gets old and uh, the lady that was commenting on the slippery mud. Yeah, you're not going to get hurt slipping there, but, or not likely, but um, it's, it's unpleasant. It's, it, but the dam, that's, God, that seems like the place to put the, the launch. It really does. The parking lots there, I don't know why, you know, for the three cars, now we're talking about a three-car lot. Why we don't have access there. It seems to me that um, that dam would uh, have to connect somewhere that uh, owns, you know. Government owns the property, but that's not my problem and uh, I, I just want to comment on that. Uh, and then I want to talk about the ramp. Okay, we're going to dig, we're going to dig a ditch down to the water. Now, right now, you're talking about almost four foot. Now, one in ten slope, you're talking about what? Forty inches, that's four foot down and then you're still got a little step off. This is very low water right now. As high as that water got this spring, and the spring was a high-water year, it was two foot. That is a built-up piece of land right there and is right by the bridge abutment. And I have archival eating, county engineers are sure, dig up my bridge abutment, throw in some rock. I, I really, and this is on the upstream side and it's a bucolic stream most of the time. But that few number of days a year that water moves, okay? And it goes up, let's go over that, Dave, I haven't been out in the dam to see it, but it must go over that dam pretty high. Uh, because I, we had building materials coming down this past winter. I was seeing sheik goods. So, you know, it's, it, it's, it's, it's an expensive bridge. You know, who's, who's going to be responsible for that? I didn't like, is this superintendent better? Okay, I wasn't sure. I didn't like hearing that the parking lot was the hard part and that the ramp was the easy part. It seemed to me that that was backwards. Just, I mean, that's a nice bridge. How much do you like it? I mean, I, hopefully the county, you know, engineers buy off on it.
Do you, do you know where these people are putting in now, these, these three people?
Everybody just about uses the uh, the legion. You know, it's, it's the logical place because it's, it's literally, you could crawl to the water from the parking lot. And uh, and the water comes right up to the bank, but it's a little unpleasant. You know, it's, it's, it's smoky and slimy and, and uh, you know, having kayak, I knew quite a bit out west. Um, I'm used to nice, clean rocks and things and uh, that's where the investment should be put, I think. But, you know, I can see where the legion would have problems, but boy, it would seem to me that there's a partnership that would be made. Because when they use that parking lot, I'm sure they could block it off, but there's never more than one or two cars over there. Now, it was busy, I'm sure, the past two summers. You know, it, COVID, it was, there, I, I saw some groups up to eighteen. Now, I never saw it before, haven't seen it since. This year, nothing almost, you know, not, almost nothing, literally. This was a big weekend, three. So it's whatever, whatever you think best, but uh. I, I, I like the idea of people going up and down that creek. I like ownership. I like ownership being spread as wide as possible and more people are bought in, the more people will maintain it. That's good. But uh, it, it's not good to, to. Dig up a bridge, I mean, which essentially is what you're doing. You are literally right at the abutment. And um, and like you said, just it, water is a very powerful force. But that's the engineer's job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Say something about this.
Anybody else?
Hi, Stacy Brown, town resident on Hubbard, actually adjacent to
Need your address too, please.
Oh seventeen eighty-one.
Okay.
Um adjacent to Major's Park property and um I've definitely been interested in this concern for multiple reasons. Knowing Don Owens, also as a kayaker, um which I'm kind of surprised the Boy Scouts every year. I I swear I still saw them this year, take their canoes and put in, they put in the legion. They have multiple canoes that they put in every spring. And they canoe, which I don't know if they ask the legion for permission to put in, but as the gentleman was saying, it's a great waterway. It should be accessed. The town owns lots of property on that creek. It's really an issue of getting into it and again, people are getting in it, they're not getting in it legally, I think is really the problem. There needs to be a put in to utilize that property. As far as how far you can go, it depends on seasonality. Um how far you go is going to depend on water level. Um it's a calm stream, but there's down trees. I think on a pre-ular, pretty regular basis, there's down trees in the creek. I don't know exactly spots, but I think even now there's down trees that block you from going very far, which I believe is actually probably some of those are town property trees as well. I was talking to Mark in the hall and apologize if I was loud, but I was talking a little bit about that. Because there's multiple concerns, a good put in, yes, um I kind of agree both sides. I mean, unfortunately, the people who live in the townhouses, it's like it is their backyard, but that spot's not, they don't own that, it's the towns. And if the hound wants to get access to that creek, to give the kayakers who want to get in that creek and they do anyways, I mean, unfortunately, it's not their property, is my opinion. But at the same time, I think realistically, and I've talked to Mr. Gunnar about it as well, parking is a concern and I talked to Mark in the call a little bit about it because I've talked, had discussions about the parking and is it realistic when Mark sat here and I apologize, I don't know his last name off the top of my head.
Gaston.
Guest and when he sat here and said, when when the question was, can you pull in a vehicle with a trailer with the you know, your your boats are saying the Boy Scouts, they pull a truck with, I think it's like six or eight canoes on it. Is that going to be possible? If that's not possible, the Boy Scouts are still putting in at the legion, are we really solving the problem? So I think that's something which I talked to Mr. Gaston a little bit then about that, like, is this real a realistic place, you know, for this? Regardless, I think it's a nice piece of property and it needs to be, you know, it should be utilized. If not, you know, someone's been posting and I'm on Facebook, I'm the admin of the store and I'm sure.
Oh dear Lord, you are doing God's work then.
I apologize, I try to keep things under control, but so there's also people recently, and I don't know who follows it well, but you've been seeing people posting of where can I go fishing? So there's multiple things that the spot could be utilized for. Is it something where, you know, not a lot of money is spent and it's very simple. I like Mr. Gunnar saying, you know, don't spend a lot of money. You know, make it kind of simple. Mr. Gaston thinks that it's not a huge deal and he thinks a lot of the funding can come from them versus from East Doran, he he or from the town of Aurora, he thinks even that Mr. Gunnar say maybe we overestimated how much needs to be spent to even make this happen. I think it's just realisticness, come up with a plan, see if it's something where there's enough room to make it, you know, I feel like a truck and trailer should be able to at least pull in to drop. So I definitely think either way, the town under utilizes that waterway. The town owns, I and I don't know, you guys probably know how much of it. I'm on Major's Park side on Hubbard, that's not utilized at all, but it's got a tall bank, it's not really a place you can even make a put in. The other side, it's a distance and I've literally walked it trying to find a put in, it's a distance to get anywhere. So if you're dragging your kayak, if you have wheels, if you're trying to get somewhere to put in, it's it's tough, so it's a very underutilized. I think we know it's a great piece of property, we're just not you don't, you know, using it really. I mean, the Oleen Road side of Major's Park is popular, very popular, who found those who found it, you know, it's it's a beautiful piece of property. That waterway we need to get access, so I feel like, see what we can do with this, but there's definitely a want, I posted and as well, I don't know if you saw any, I don't know if you're on the Facebook, but I posted as well. Just an inquiry, um I've posted inquiries in the past when I first heard about this, many people are interested. So it is something where a lot of people maybe don't because they can't deal with the sludge and slime putting in at the legion. Or people just don't know because it it's not something that's easy to find because it's really not supposed to be, you know, put in. So I think there is the, I know that there is definitely a want or need for this as a put in for crews and kayaks. Um it doesn't have to be, I don't think, intrusive for the small piece of land, but I definitely think that there is a need from just the response I've gotten between the East Doran page and Westerner canoeing and kayak pages. So I definitely think it's something that should be addressed the way to get in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anybody else? Anybody online? Nobody online? Okay. Then we'll move on to unfinished business. There is none. New business, we have to add one item and that is the um grant um for the charging stations from um University of Buffalo. Have a motion to add H to the agenda. Motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
I opposed and as carried. Next, we have um A, which is our fireworks permit. We just discussed for Strawberry Banks Farm. I have a motion to approve the um special use permit for the fireworks permit on Davis Road.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck. I have a second. Second by Jim, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
And it is carried. Next, we have the comprehensive plan resolution that Joe Rettis. And that is to um spend up to eight thousand dollars on a um grant to look at upgrading our comprehensive plan. Do I have a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke, any discussion? All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not not for the grant, right? It's the money for the actual plan, which would be ten percent.
If we win the grant, then we have the money set aside for or allocated for the actual process.
Right.
Does this resolution need to go with the grant application?
Yes, it does.
Does it need to be a certified resolution?
Uh what would that entail?
Certifying it?
Yes, that would be good. Yeah, it's all points, you know, how that goes. The more what the what they're looking for is our commitment to moving forward with the processes, getting us points on the grant application.
What is the, what what do you have to do to get certification?
Okay.
So then it needs to get sent over to Wendell then, once it's certified?
Yes, please. And I believe uh Bridget did have some notes. This was not the copy that Bridget had. She she sent over an email with some notes, but it's there reflected in this, but I I think it was just. Do you? Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Opposed and as Carrie, next we have recreation. This is a request from Chris to hire seasonal pool staff. Life guards have just completed their training with Chris and can be utilized later in the season when our college age guards head back to college during upcoming school year. The rates are based on the board approval two thousand twenty-two rate chart. And the minimum wage in two thousand true, twenty-two went to twelve fifty to thirteen dollars twenty cents. Um do I have a motion to approve as listed?
Uh hold on one second. Uh I it's a thirteen twenty, but in the rate is this thirteen sixty on the.
Correct, so thirteen twenty is the
Yes, minimum wage.
Oh, I just read it. Okay, thank you, Chris.
I have a question. Is this, does this mean the pool is going to be open later than usual?
No, no, we in August start using college age guards as early as the first week.
And the the school year for?
Or
And that's at the high school pool? I don't know, school. And when does the pool close? There's there's really no, not enough workers to extend that at all if we were to.
Oh, it's currently it's not budgeted.
I don't know if like this year, but I think that the one, remember the one year it was left open a couple of weeks because you didn't have access to the Easter Oracle. It did seem like it got a lot of use. And it would be interesting to think, I mean, probably not enough time this year, but moving forward to at least have the pool open to Labor Day might be something worth looking into for the budget season, how much extra that would be.
I don't believe we had a motion yet, though.
I don't know what we're doing. What are we up to?
We went in discussion without a motion. Uh the motion was to adopt the list.
So moved.
Okay, we have Joe, do I have a second? Second by Luke. Any any discussion now? All in favor?
I.
I opposed and as carried. Next, we have another request from Chris and this is uh to add water safety instructor rate to the below employees and to retroactively pay them at the rate for the six twenty-five to seven, eight payroll for their time teaching swim lessons. The rate is only used when an employee is instructing. He below employees completed their rest across water safety instruction instructor certification in late June. Rates are based on the board approval two thousand twenty-two rate chart attached. And the two thousand twenty-two minimum wage increased from twelve fifty to thirteen twenty an hour. Do I have a motion to approve as listed? Second by Chuck, discussion.
Even on CNN, right, that there was CNN, Fox, the book had articles about not having enough lifeguards around the country, so.
CNN. Any other discussion? Comments? All in favor? I opposed and it is carried. Next, we have a request from Elizabeth DiVizio to um extend the contract with the UniFirst, three-year contract extension with UniFirst for highway building and senior center rug rental and shop uniform rentals. Uh we've been using them since two thousand sixteen and very happy with their products and services. Current contract with them expires, the company has offered to give, excuse me, uh twenty percent discount if we renew on a contract for three years. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jim, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed and that's carried. Next, we have a budget trans- uh transfer from Kathleen Moffett. This is for thirteen hundred sixty-five dollars. And it's to prevent an overdraw of appropriation account um for medical insurance reimbursement. We have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
It's my Chuck, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed and that is Carrie, this is next. Um request from Dave Gunnar to uh to attend the highway conference. Uh the New York State Association of Town Superintendents of Highways Annual Conference Education and Expo in Elicottville. And the registration fee is one hundred dollars. We stayed at the Holiday Valley Resort for three nights and that's made a total four hundred and eighty dollars. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Luke, I have a second.
I'll second.
Like my Chuck, any discussion?
As long as Chief Krieger notifies the Elicottville Police Department, what's going to be happening in the end of September? Good.
I'm going to stay out of that one. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed and then it's carried. And then H would be um motion to approve. Going for the grant for the uh charging stations from UV. I have a motion.
Right then, for the two, I don't think I have to specify, but the two locations, the pool.
Pool Park and Highway.
Highway.
Pool Park, which park? The Pool Park, the Pool Park, okay, Pool Park and Highway, so two, okay. Okay. For to start anyway.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so you made a motion, second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed and it's carried. Next, we go to communications and reports. We have the town clerk work regulations and supervisor uh May two thousand twenty-two report. And then next I'll go to business from the board members and we'll start with Luke.
Like, nothing from Luke tonight, Chuck. I just want to mention that the fireworks was awesome. Everyone seemed to be having a good time that night. It was a beautiful night and uh thank you Councilman Woszewski for lining up the shirts. We all looked especially dapper that night.
How many people do you think were there that I mean, it was packed.
I don't.
Four thousand. A lot of people, isn't it? When you think about it.
And you know, Megan, for her first time, she she hit a home run, I tell you.
She did awesome. I saw her awesome at the at the at the foam party. And whatever we pay her per hourly, it was very, it was not even near enough. Because uh I mean, she was a great job. The line was all through the park, twisting around to get in there and she was taking them in and out. Um I I didn't go up to her because she did that.
Yeah, I don't think we had too many problems to reach, I mean, that you. Very well. Anything else, Chuck?
Nope.
My stuff was on the agenda tonight, so I am good.
Nothing from me, so we'll go to audience two, which is an opportunity to address the uh board on anything. It looks like our audience left. Who's that, Rod? Come on up, Rod. I know you always got something.
Only three things. Number one, it's nice to see uh non Plexigas glass representatives of our elected officials. You're all very good looking people and I can hear you, so I don't know if that's a temporary or is that a permanent arrangement?
Hopefully it's permanent.
The good looking is permanent.
Good. Uh good, second thing is the proper he's a plan. If I understand it right, you approved up to a thousand dollars to pay Mr. Riley and Wendell to apply for the grant and if you get it, then that eight thousand or so kicks in, is that correct?
Yes.
Have you recently attended a session, uh training session down at Houghton where uh Mr. Riley was the head speaker in the session I was in. He is an outstanding individual, very down to earth and it will be money well spent to do that. So hopefully we can get that grant and move on.
Yeah, just just so the the eight thousand is not for the grant writing.
I understand.
Yeah, the the ten percent, so.
He's going to write the grant and there'll be some kind of committee to review it, is that correct?
So so the the grant, yes, and then we're not committed to Wendell. That'll be a decision we have in the future. Um it could be Wendell, but we have not committed to that, so um I I think they they want to apply, obviously, that's why they're writing a grant.
I don't think we can commit.
We can't commit to them at this point, so.
Yeah. Hey, uh Rod, if as a member of the ZBA, if I can hijack your uh time, if you are willing to write a letter of support If you were willing to write a letter of support for the comprehensive plan project, that would garner us points in the grant process. That you generally support the idea of the town of Aurora updating their comprehensive.
We will get the, uh, Mr. Ertz and all of us to support that.
That would be great.
And I'll, I'll bring it up when I see them this week.
Excellent, thank you.
Third thing is the, uh, discussion about, uh, secondary houses in those zones. And I know we made some light of grandma living there, but, uh, if, if you're going to do that, it's a slippery slope because you're gonna have to define what kind of relationship. Is it just grandmothers, is it brothers, sisters? Is it the Griswold cousin from Arizona? Yeah. And, uh, it, uh, it will, it will require a lot of T's crossed and I's dotted to make that a, um, ironclad situation or else there's gonna be a ton of administration that none of you want, so. Not saying I'm for it or against it, but, but tread carefully.
All right, that was just one idea, Rod, it may, it may not state in a, that it has to be a relative, you know, it
And then that gets another set of issues if they're non-relatives, you know?
Well, but this, we're just at the beginning stage, but thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rod. Anybody else? If not, we'll go to staff reports, uh, nothing from Adam from library? Dave? Uh, I guess, we'll give you a few more. Time's up. Tennis courts too?
Well, the pickleball courts first and later.
Yeah, I had a couple people ask about the tennis courts. Alright. Alright, thanks. Chris?
I just wanna echo the thoughts on.
I, I didn't mean to leave you out on that too, I'm sorry, because I know you were part of it.
But, uh, yeah, I, I thought you did a great job. Uh, you know, it's been a lot of time with the pool staff over the past few days. Safety issues and just trying to get them to work with their kids. Out there, I also have some service training that's planned for this, uh, Saturday and a few weeks ago, so. We'll staff out there.
Thanks. Jane?
Please lock your cars and don't freak the heat cops in them. We had a rash of a total of six cars going over a couple of weeks. Reading one of them. Chased a few of them. They had no fear of hurting or killing somebody. But it's all due to they're not breaking into cars without wearing them. They're opening car doors and push buttons and see if the car starts. Working on that, who's all, one, one car has been recovered, I think. Um, and the fireworks, the parade went off. Very well, as usual. An excellent job, she probably still sleeping. Couple days before.
Okay, thanks. Oh, that's right.
And a Budweiser.
Yes, a lot of horses.
The Bud, when are they here?
On Sunday.
They're here on Sunday?
What are they doing? Just walking around town?
No, they're, they're, they're doing a little rude, they're meeting, they're
Giving away beers.
Okay.
They're coming up Main Street.
Gonna be gone.
They're gonna be playing football, I think.
Everybody's getting goofy today.
Head out to Doug Berwanger's farm, you don't have to go to Budweiser.
Free Budweiser.
Nice.
Don't say that.
We'll have more than four thousand people. Is. Okay. I need a motion to approve the abstract. Motion by Jim?
Second.
Like my Chuck, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
I oppose and a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Joe. Do I have a second? We gotta go.
Second.
Second by Chuck. Any discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
I oppose.